Okay, bring this council order on the 2022. Please stand your good and pledge their allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Everybody received their minutes in their packet or in your email, whichever way you get your minutes. Does anyone have any questions, amendments, changes, that sort of thing on minutes on July 14th? Okay, then I need a motion. Thank you Carl M. Second. In further discussion, we'll go around them right away. Yes, Natalie?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Treasury report, everybody has a copy of Treasury report with balances, below balances? You can see that cat financials paid up once we approved that with the ARCA funds, we get that paid. And, um, and I think you guys know what things should be paying up too, like the regular, the net sort of thing along the way. So we'll get all that taken care of in the next little while. So any questions on the treasury, bills for payment? Everybody has their list there? Any, any questions, any line items and things like that? Carl, you can see the benches are on there.
I did, it's a bench.
They, uh, they're in, um, they want nowhere to put them. I told them, Cecilia, they just go down first and figure out where to put them.
I was down there the other day, actually did a walk-in, because two lane jobs I didn't.
I don't think they put them in yet, I don't think, they haven't told me, but they're in, uh, they're in, when I say they're in, they're in.
They're here.
They're here, yes, yes, but, um, they still have to be in place, so we got two of them put in.
We have nowhere to place.
Chances are it'll be down towards the river, because that's where your place to put them. That's, that's, that's a chance.
What's number 10?
Number 10, consign.
It's for the police department when they need to calibrate their radar equipment, they have the tuning forks, that's how they calibrate the equipment.
Every morning. Right? Andy Schiff. Andy Schiff, if you get one. Judge will answer that. Any, any other questions? Okay, for the motion first.
I make a motion to make one.
Thank you Debbie, you have a second?
I have a second.
Sharon, any further discussion? In all favor, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. Cooperative procurement amendment consideration, and that's this one, right?
Yes.
And everyone got emails, one was relatively short, one was quite frankly very long, a seventeen, I don't expect us to do anything with a seventeen page thing, because there's just, I didn't get time to read it personally myself.
Can you explain it?
If you want to.
Sure. So, um, what we're talking about is purchases by the town, so we have to follow the Virginia Public Procurement Act, that's like our standard. There are multiple exemptions to the Public Procurement Act, one of which is when we do small purchases. So several years ago, we adopted, um, article one, or title one dash nine point one, which was under a certain amount, under fifty thousand dollars, you know, the manager can do it under certain, under certain levels, and that's cod five. So five thousand or less is a criteria, five thousand, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, fifty thousand, over fifty thousand's gotta be open bid and all that. What we're talking about tonight is a very, very small portion of the cooperative procurement, and this means that if another municipality has put out a bid to buy something, for example, something for the police department, right? And that municipality say was broad, but they did the open bid process and they found the person that provided it, and that was the right price. As long as they did it in a way that other, would allow what they call piggybacking, other municipalities to buy from that same person, then that would invite, when we adopt this ordinance, we could then buy from the same supplier that we did, but that had to go through all of the bid process. It's because somebody's already been through the process, there's no reason to do it twice. Now, there's strict rules about it, we still have to follow the Public Procurement Act, and that's within a certain amount of time and all that, but it just allows us, the example right now is the bathrooms, and piggybacked on something Rockhampton County just recently did. And so it saves time, energy, and resources. That's the short amendment that we're voting on now, which is in front of you, or Melinda could pass around. The second part is called the Virginia PPEA, which is the seventeen page thing, which is the Public Procurement Education Act. And it's really for, twenty some years ago, there's the PPTA, which is the Public Procurement Transportation Act. So we have these big public-private partnerships, like everything they're doing on sixty-six and sixty-four, um, those are all public-private partnerships, they're called P three projects. That allows for municipalities to engage a construction company to do the design and the build, instead of just the build. So AC's example, we go back to email, was on point about where we don't want a builder saying, oh, you didn't follow the right design, and then we have to go back to the architect. We want to do a DBA, DVIA contract that we can, which is a design-build contract. The PPEA guidelines will enable us to allow someone to do a design-build contract, which we can't currently do. The other great part about that is we can then receive proposals for things that the town doesn't necessarily have to come up with. So we can have private citizens that say, you have this abandoned building, or like the old pool or something, we want to do this project, we have this company that's interested in doing it, we've already done some of the legwork, they can bring that proposal to the town, and then we can consider it. There's public hearing requirements, there's a lot of stuff that goes into that, but I think it's something that we should really consider, so that we can start doing design and build stuff. So for tonight, we're only talking about the piggyback to the cooperative procurement, but the next step will be kind of revising artful biography ordinances, so that we can adopt a PPEA, so we can be a little bit more flexible in how we do procurement.
And it took me a while to understand this, it also did, but it's truly things that are basically already manufactured. You can't do this on a construction project.
Correct.
But you can do things like police radio, police cars, uh, well, the bathroom, because it's a prefabricated building, now, if you need to buy storage sheds or what, something that's already made, you're basically like buying stuff from the store kind of deal.
Right.
Yeah, so that, that kind of thing. And it took me a while, for, for explanations, I didn't get it till finally today, so it took that long. But, um, it's basically something that's already, that's come pre-made, ready, set, and you can just piggyback on one. Harrisonburg, he's already done it, they've already went through things, we found out what the best, what do we call it?
Most calls, most responsible bidder.
Right, they've already just determined that, so I think it's ten guys, and they already have that, they already have it for us, which, which makes a lot of sense. But that's all we possibly doing tonight. Everyone, for your reading pleasure, you're gonna read that seventeen page thing by next month, you know, get ready today, kind of deal, and be ready for next month. I think it's a great idea, Zondill, we did a lot of Zondill projects, and they're usually working on what we call, it's people designing their building, and they understand what they can and cannot do. Um, any questions on one, and it's this resolution, is there ever a copy of the resolution?
Just what I handled.
Does anybody want a copy of it before we move? Okay. So it'll be, um, be adopted, it'll be handed around for everyone to sign for, Melinda's got, you got, you got some regional, you got one? Yeah, okay. So, yeah, this is on the, uh, cooperative, does this sign the initials? This one, this one, this one does not have the initials, and the cooperative procurement, it's like this one's, any questions?
Is there any type of database for all the localities to put in the types of things they're bidding on, so that you know?
And that's how I got turned on to the, um, the preback, registered, or engineer, I guess it's about the stroke, and then I was talking to a friend who works for the county, and he said, that's what the county did for their bathroom facility at the Rockhampton Park, that crossroads. Um, and so, and ended up talking to Marco Newark, who works for Parks and Rec at the county, and he told me that they went through Sourcewell, which is a company, it's actually a, it's not a company, it's a subdivision of local government in Minnesota.
Okay.
And that's where Rockhampton went through them to cure their facility. So, and you can go in, they have, I think they have four hundred contracts in there for just a variety of different items. Um, and so there were a couple of different companies listed for precast, um, structures like that.
So is it a resource that will be able to use multiple times?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, and it, we're already registered with it, um, there is no fee to be a part of it, because it is a subdivision of local government.
Okay.
Minnesota's legislature set it up.
Is it the only one out there like that?
There may be more, and once we get into it, we can all start searching for more, but you know, it, it's very appealing, because of the time and savings it gives.
Fairfax, but it also has something similar.
Okay, yeah, we'll check around and see, so, but, and, and we, and I looked at, I talked to several different companies, it kind of leads into the part of discussion. Um, I talked to several different companies and got pricing from these different, it was at least three different companies, and the one that was listed on Sourcewell had the lowest cost. Um, it was pretty easy to compare it that way, they actually had their entire price list on, on that site, so, um, but yeah, we'll check around for our entities that kind of have a clearing out of those types of contracts.
Very cool, thanks for bringing that up.
Absolutely.
And this will enable us, for any procurement that we do, to include language on our procurement proposals, so that other people can then use our resources as well.
Right. It's a great idea.
It's very collaborative, it's, yeah.
So any more questions? Now I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve?
And a second?
A second.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Melinda, you can hand that around. Jerry, you got anything for us tonight, or anything when you are?
Just go. Ready, ready. The K9 program is off running, Officer Vazuzki is in his second week of training, I spoke with him briefly, he said he's eager to get back to work, get back to summer bill. Donations to date, it's one thousand nine hundred fifty-one and fifty cent, there are more options available, we're still working on those. Last week was National My Health, everything went well. Uh, we want to thank the everyone in front office, the maintenance department, and the local fire department for all their help. This year, the Bruins are here at Park and Forest, and they offer to, uh, have a future event. Lastly, the PD, the model is still in place, Megan Scott did a fantastic job, uh, because they still chip away at it, chip away at it as it keeps it, and they don't have other projects going on.
That's it?
Good to go?
That's right. And everything's fine, Steve's good to go, or a little sore?
Yes, obviously Officer Knight's involved in a crash this morning, across eleven thirty. He was system safety, so a little pursuit came to town, unfortunately vehicle, what I brought him, I see more or less stern, he avoided being in a car, and stayed in the utility home. He is, he's a little, little sore, although then he should be back for a month. Thank you.
And all the, um, all the information has been submitted to the church company, we're all there, everything involved with that, um, with that incident, so we'll submit that today.
Thanks, Melinda.
You're welcome.
Okay, we can call the workplace, hey?
So a few updates on different projects we've been, we have been working on, um, that we really haven't, council probably hasn't really heard a lot about, uh, we know that this far mine project was approved with the, the ARCA funding, um, there's a stream crossing involved with that, so it's a lot more involved than if we're just putting the water on somewhere. Uh, one of the things with that, I spoke with Carl Schaefer, the engineer that's been working on that for us, um, he said that, um, there isn't much left to be done on the engineering side of things, but they don't want to finalize everything until the EQ comes out and does their assessment to see if there's any thing. He said, just in case by some, he doesn't think he's gonna have it, but he said, there is always a possibility that EQ could come up and say, you have to alter the route before that, a proper scoop there. Um, we, uh, just today received back two, um, documents that give the EQ permission to enter the property, to do their assessment, um, because most of this project will be in the state right of way, but where it goes under the stream, it has to get off of the roadway, um, to get down into the lower area to do the, do the stream crossing. So EQ won't go into the property unless they have a work document about from the owner or a representative of the property saying that they can go down and go ahead. So we have those back today, we'll pass those on to the EQ, um, any other EQ requirements that the insurance firm's working on, we're still pushing that, that one along, um, and trying to get all of the red tape out of the way, so we can actually begin construction. And we do have all the materials in stock for that, that's all to deliver, and, uh, once we get the go-ahead from the engineer, then we can get the, uh, get a contractor lined up to do that project. Along with the same thing with the engineering, we've talked about, found some looking, additional water source for the town, and we told the engineer, go ahead and start the process of doing that, and Carl said that he has talked to, uh, a firm that it's, it might be out of Lynchburg area, and, um, they received a proposal from that geo-tech company, and Carl's team has reviewed it, and he just sent it over today for us to review, but basically, it helped with the, we've talked about this before, many years ago, some of your council members might not have heard of this, but the resistivity treatment of testing, where basically the leper's in the ground, and the data that we gather by doing that can be a good indicator of where the water will be found. And we have some, um, with some stuff that has come up, we have some new areas that we might look at, um, they have very high control from old wells, that they're overhand well wells, so, um, we're proceeding with that, and, um, we'll get that one. That's, that's a much longer project, um, unless, if they cancel about that, it's gonna be like a three to five year project to find, um, study and develop a source.
We'll have to approve the funding part once we get the contract.
Right, exactly, yeah. The, the only thing that we've allocated towards that project so far is the engineering part that we already funds. Um, once we get into it, in the heavier, medium part, then we have to, yeah, like the manager said, look at the funding thing part of it. Algera's excavation completed the Viking portion of the water main extension project in North Main Street to the forefront subdivision, they'll be back out to repair the asphalt where the coves made access that line, and it didn't get a little bit further over than what we had anticipated. Old areas of panels and that's kind of our locate lines, they found an old sewer line that they thought was the water line, when they were using a locator, so they go for, for, for. Actually got it into the other, other lane of traffic, so a little bit more, um, intuitive than what we expected, but all the same, we, we now know where the water line is, and the connections are made, and, um, they'll get that cleaned up soon. And the final thing I have on public works is that we have received the disbursement from Rockhampton County for fifty thousand dollars from the Torres Department that we applied for, so that has been, we have received a check for that, and as you know, that will be going towards the bathroom project at the American Division for it.
If you haven't had a chance to see what the guys have done down at the police department, um, please check it out, they got the walls up, they got the sheetrock up, they're finishing up the sheetrock, and hopefully in the next couple weeks, we start painting. And, um, we got contestants out, are getting bids for the drop seal, and the air conditioner guy is just waiting for the drop seal, like somewhere kind of that way in the area right now. Uh, once you start painting, it's gonna be fantastic.
And you probably just gonna came in, or walked out there, and all of a sudden the front has been taken out, um, that drain is gonna be extended down through where that flowerhead was, that's why everything is gonna be moved from there, to be able to catch all that water and send it all out beyond where we built it.
And it appears since we've, we've done the gathering and everything they've done, that there isn't a, the water issue we thought we had, it was just the way everything was put in there, didn't have any vaporizer, didn't have, the gathering wasn't very good, it's just, it was just a perfect scenario for getting water into the place, but it doesn't look like we have an issue in that one. Any questions? Do you want to add anything to business and industry?
We had taught us in the memo about the, um, uh, potential business that might, yeah, somebody was looking at the, um, old drugstore, and Quinn and I are working on the language for that, to come up with something that may, uh, give us a way.
Well, the drugstore you talked about.
This is the old Timberville Drugstore on the corner of Main, South Main Street, and right to a, you might agree. We still don't have any word officially on what the old Walgreens building is gonna be, so I'm not gonna release anything public on that, because the only stuff that I have is, um, it's not verified, so we'll let other people spread rumors, get that removed a little. So with that, with the potential for the old drugstore, um, we're looking into that, how gaming would be, and, um, allowed or permitted in there if permitted, and at what point does that threshold cross to make that improve? What, what creates a primary use of a building? You know, is it based on, and Quinn and I have both got ideas, is it based on square footage of the building, is, you know, fifty, fifty percent of the use for this, or is it the amount of revenue that's being generated by a certain use? But we'll get that all figured out, and like I say, I have, I've only had one conversation with the individual who had expressed interest in that, and I haven't written anything since, since then. So I don't know how serious it is, um, but.
Who is responsible for the water that stands?
That would be the property owner, and I've talked to the property owner about that, they're supposed to have done something about that, and I've got that on a list of things to follow up on, because it's still standing.
Right, because I threw a mosquito down, and the mosquito party was wonderful.
Um, he got, I had them come out and look at it, and I said it wasn't there, it was okay.
No, something has to be done, because it's getting worse.
See, there's supposed to be, it looks like there's supposed to be a natural drainage, um, down to Center Street, and then the one down into the field and regular that way, but it looks like improvements that have been made over the years to the parking up there at the, at the cliffs, uh, has blocked, that's what the block, and, and I talked to the property owner about potential fixes for that, and then putting a drain in under Park Mall, just to either move that water down to the open, to the old hills that it can drink from.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's still, still a list, so.
And now I have some questions from some council on the, uh, our new business down here in the, um, Overgrowth, and we found out that they have a new manager coming in who hasn't been trained on managing the store yet, and they reached out and got a contract, got a contract made to get the landscape being repaired and fixed, and that's gonna be done in eighteen, eighteen?
Uh, for the state team.
Eighteen, yeah, it's eighteen, so that was just, they had done it before they had the management team in place, uh, some of the stuff should spill through the holes. Did a fault due to mold, but it did help them, so they worked on that too, I know Debbie asked, I'm sure a lot of people were asking too.
And with the new store, it looks like the traffic flow is working pretty well there, um, I think most people have become accustomed to where the entrances and exits are, um, I know more and more people are starting to use First Avenue, and just kind of watching the traffic patterns and the traffic flow, it doesn't seem like it's, you know, they're allowing sort of traffic on First Avenue, but it doesn't seem that it's disturbing with the traffic, obviously it's a be out street, so it's a permitted, it's permitted, be documented to put that entrance in, is it there, but it looks like the traffic's flowing pretty well.
Okay, so Parks and Rec.
Had a Parks and Rec meeting on Tuesday, and, um, discussed the bathroom facility, um, members came to a, uh, we'd offered up multiple different options, um, members came to a conclusion as to what they liked, or a style that they liked. One of the things that I thought about after that was that the, and I'm gonna go back through and look at those, and I'll start again, since you all, the whole list of those options to look at. Um, one of the things with the stop that, um, was kind of decided on, was that it doesn't have any family restrooms, it's all, you know, there are no individual restrooms remaining. So I'm gonna go back and look through and see if there's anything similar to that, that that might go, that has a family restroom in it somewhere, or if there's a modification they can make to, like the men's side, because it's, it's the same footprint as the, um, as the one that had four individual restrooms. So, um, I'm gonna go back and look through that and get that out, but we, um, at least what I took away from the committee meeting, I guess, is that it was in favor of that progress and moving forward in that restroom facility in there, so that that part, uh, becomes much more user-friendly and easy.
And it's basically what we learned, it's a prefabricated building, it comes floors, plumbing, everything comes in on a truck, if it's a certain size, maybe two trucks, it comes in a truck, crank fits it up, sets it down on our pre-prepared gravel pad, you hook up the plumbing, hook the electric, and you're good to go. And it just comes in, and it's all concrete, it's seismic rated, it's fire rated, it's, it's everything, and it should last forever. Um, we have all kinds of options, like everything else we have to pick, but it, it falls within the budget that we have prepared, um, the original budget of two hundred thousand, and we have fifty thousand and two hundred thousand to be in, take care of the Rockhampton County grant, so, uh, it all falls in line with that, and it's a hundred and eighty day lead time.
Right, from the town we placed an order with this company, it's a hundred and eighty days out before we deliver.
Which is probably far quicker than we gotta find a contractor, give us, let's get it made, so everything, lead times, quality, all that thing, we work out really well, so.
So we're gonna keep pushing on that?
We just gotta pick out, okay, I'm gonna go.
Pick out, get the exact style, and then finish it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then, um, we're waiting for Chris to get a good spot, so we can finally get the over and put it in park, we just need, the guys are just so busy, I have invitations and stuff, we just wait to get that.
And I talked to your spokesman, he said he has stuff, so.
That's all Parks and Rec, anyone else? Finance, I know we had to talk about sometime doing a budget amendment, maybe.
We tried to bet on it, had it ready for next month.
That's basically, we had to do an amendment for all the ARCA funds that we spent last year that weren't pledged, because we had it, and it will have to do again, and it never do with ARCA funds, because of what kind of we expand, right? That's all, finance personnel?
Got employees on vacation, got employees, you know, everybody's covered, got trained, the, um, yeah, police officers are training, um, everybody picks up, like always, everybody picks up in the spots that need, where we need help, and things keep getting done, but, yeah, we, we can never, I don't, I can't, I'm such an exceptional individual, a deep person.
Okay, museum, uh, does that for us? Nothing?
Well, I can't really give enough to read anything, but we'll go over state, so make sure y'all want for dinner.
How can't you see today?
I got a cat race to be taking off in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
That's the sound of the age, I think, is what I heard.
Oh, yeah, you don't get it.
Uh, the museum building was, uh, built in nineteen forty-one, in October the ninth, nineteen forty-two, the Rockhampton Building, for business. The big brick building next door, the William G. Thompson House, was built in eighteen thirty-seven, and was torn down in nineteen eighty-one. It'll be down another notch in the old post office building, was built in nineteen twelve by Charles Corning, and, uh, in nineteen fifty-three, they moved across the river. And the telephone exchange was in the upper floor, on top, and the next building down, what it would keep in place is now, was built as a golf filming station in nineteen thirty. And that's, that's a previous, uh, location of the W. A. Kent Store, but Mason Bear in eighteen forty-four built the building, we got pictures of it, the big old building, and, uh, the W. A. Kent Store, this is a store there in eighteen sixty, and of course, the building, like I said, was torn down in nineteen thirty, but W. A. Kent's was the postmaster, now I've got a, a little, uh, post office box deposit there for the, for the rent in eighteen ninety-four, eighteen ninety-five, and, um, anybody wanna guess what the, what the box rent in those years, how much it was? Because I think the last time it paid nine now was fifty-six dollars.
It is fifty-some dollars.
It was, uh, five cents for three months, sorry, twenty, twenty cents a year. And, uh, then the Farmers Purchase Bank, built in nineteen oh eight. Railroad, first ranked into Timberville in eighteen sixty-eight, the old Zinkler House in north end of the bridge, the brick, the brick building was, uh, built in eighteen thirty-two, and all those buildings, Timberville's, one on the left-hand side of the right, as you go in, that was, uh, around seventeen fifty. Maybe we had six bridges down there, uh, it's a bunch too, we don't have any names on it, but the third bridge was built in eighteen forty, and it was washed away in eighteen forty. But the third bridge was built in eighteen forty, and it was washed away in eighteen forty-three. And for forty-one years, they had to ford the river until eighteen eighty-four, when our big famous couple bridge was built. And that was torn down in nineteen thirty-eight, and then the one we remember all those years, and that was a bridge done in nineteen ninety-six, the one we have now. And the Godfather piece of building was built in Leicester Hooper in nineteen forty-one. The big house across from the bank on that side of the road was the DS Walter Home. That was built in eighteen ninety-five, and DS Walter Store, the first one was eighteen ninety-three. That was a wooden building, we have pictures of that. And then the brick one that was just taken down was built in nineteen oh nine. Anyway, always have to, they made the bricks on the, on the field, in the field behind the, behind the store. And then Dr. Vaughn started his medical practice in eighteen eighty-four, and he started his drugstore in eighteen eighty-five. And if you want to jump throughout the role, Mini Stores, the building on that side of the road, same side of the road as the museum. Vaughn and Nickelstein started, that was the first drugstore in Timberville in eighteen eighty-three. And Nickelstein bought out Vaughn, and then in nineteen oh seven, that shut down, because Nickelstein retired. And Mini Stores started that building in nineteen thirty. I think that's a good place to put that.
How do you do that? I can't remember what I did earlier today.
Yesterday.
That is amazing.
We understand.
Yeah, that is amazing, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other business for the council, I didn't think I saw anything else this afternoon. Okay. Other comment, I know we have a guest here. Do you want to, do you want to start out?
Sure, I'm sure I'm welcome.
Come on up.
Let me introduce myself real quick to some of the council members. My name is Jim Sack, and on July sixth, I had a twenty-five-year career in journalism. And on July eighteenth, I joined United Ways as its Director of Development. I did this for a specific reason, which I'll get into. But the main reason I'm here tonight is to thank you all, and the residents of Timberville, and the businesses of Timberville and this side of the county, who helped make our stuff bust this past weekend at the Walmart a pretty good success, and we appreciate it. And we encourage you guys again, when it comes to next year, to look at the volunteer opportunities and donation opportunities you can make for Stuff to Bust. Those supplies, which are split fifty-fifty among the Rockingham County schools and the City Harrisburg schools, are going to make a difference. The main reason I'm here, that's the main reason I'm here, the other reason I'm here is to introduce myself. This, over that twenty-five-year career in journalism, this little slice of heaven, this part of the county, the wife and I fell in love with, and we bought our first home on this side of the county. So I'm invested in this community, and I'm invested in what all you all are doing. So that is very important to me. That is why I got out of the journalism business and this job, my small little part to help this community that I dearly love. What I'm going to ask permission for, if I may approach the council members and hand them my business card. What this business card is for, if you want to help out in any way, shape, or form, or you know local residents can be connected with one of our funded partners. So if you're not interested, you can give me a call, and we can make all the things happen. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.
Thank you. The one thing, after a dental call to comment, I forgot about the replacement of the PD. We need to have an emergency motion to get, insurance has been turned in, they're going to pay for it for whatever two thousand and fifteen inch board is worth. We need to, we need that motion to get one on order so we can get it, get it, so after we get a dental call to comment, we'll do that. Anybody else do anything tonight? Have I done? Okay, let's go back to, basically, the chief call, or texted, emailed, however it was. And basically, one of us said, if we get going on replacements, we look around. Dodge has no police vehicles. Ford has one currently in stock. We think the price is like thirty-two thousand nine, that's what we get fined. Of course, we don't know how much, they're both Ford Explorer's, but does, does it, does picking up a two thousand sixteen and put it in a two thousand twenty-two, does it all work? I don't know, so it'll probably be some extra charges after that. But it's asking for us to, if we get so many tonight, so we can get one on order, we're down to... As we know, the Charger is gone, it's not, it's not working anymore. And we got one on the order, which it may be, it's just maybe in October, in October, November, to get that one, that's been ordered forever. This one's in stock, and it's a little different. It's, if you say you want EcoBoost number one, this is just stock tight motor, but that's what the other one had too, so it's relatively the same. But through two thousand nine, the court's insurance is going to pay for the whole new value of it, I don't think. But there'll be some, there'll be some gap that we'll have to cover in the future at some point, when we do a replacement event at the end of the year. So can I get a motion for the council to get this replacement vehicle moving? That's what we're going to do today. That's what we're going to do today, yes.
I need the motion.
Can we have a motion, just a signature? Okay. Further discussion? All those, yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
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 Awesome. And that's how I got it. Thank you. Want to speak in general?